All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. This is a special call of the meeting scheduled for January twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty. We'll go ahead and have our invitation by Councilwoman and our pledge allegiance led by Councilman Matt Martin.
Everyone, all their bids. Father, thank you for bringing us here this evening. I ask that you will be with us as we discuss a very important aspect of the city. And I ask that you will guide our discussions and open our minds for the discussion. I say so in the name of Amen.
Amen.
Please bring the pledge.
In the name of God, in the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you want to come back in kindergarten, sit in that chair. All right. Before we get into the one item of discussion, I had asked if there should be a notice of the meeting that needs to be signed. There were some electronic signatures. Is that something that Karen, you know, we don't need to stop everything that we're doing, but I just, before we leave tonight, if you would pass around to the council members so they can sign. Okay, there's one item on the agenda tonight, management of the Pascagoula Sports Complex. This is a continuation of an issue which came up at our previous meeting. And everyone on the council felt it was important enough to have a special call meeting about. So, since it says submitted by Michael Silverman, Mr. Silverman, we'll go ahead and let you just open the discussion if you would, and then I think the council members can just take it from there.
Yes, sir. Building off of our conversation from last week where we had a joint meeting with the Recreation Commission, we had a few items come out, come up that we do need to look at resolving. And they primarily focused on management of the facilities, the first one being concessions. The second one being, you know, how are we going to handle folks coming from out of the area, may want to play tournaments there on the weekend? So, these are some of the key things that we need to look at. And also importantly is the maintenance of the fields and who's going to be responsible for overseeing that. I've also invited Mr. Jordan, since I know he's spent a lot of time working on the fields and also has a intricate familiarity with the tournament process. And has some potential ideas on contractors that can maybe help us in facilitating these tournaments if folks are interested. And so I think it's important that we address, you know, concessions matter, who's going to be responsible for doing any type of tournaments not related to the league? And also looking at maintenance of the fields, given that we have seven fields and they are quite beautiful right now. We want to ensure that they stay that way. And any other items that you see pertaining to management as well.
Unless a member of the council has some other introductory remarks, I think we'd like to go ahead and hear from Mr. Jordan, his thoughts on this biggest project that certainly will come before this administration or this council. And Steve, you have spent a lot of time, a lot of it unpaid, when it comes to not only this project, but other things in this city. And I, I think we'd all like to hear from you as far as your thoughts going forward on how this sports place should be managed. Do you mind coming up to the podium a little bit?
A little, little background myself, for those of you that don't know, I've, I've got a, had heavy affiliation with the local league. Got the president out there for fourteen years, had sons going through the program, got a grandson still playing in the program, got a son on board at the league now. So, I, I do have an affiliation with the, the local league. This, you know, travel ball is, is one of the things that, I just want to throw a few numbers out if I, if I can, because I think it's interesting that the way this is growing. And most of this, you can research yourself, and I'm not going to bore you with all that, but travel ball since two thousand and thirteen and eighteen, kids playing travel ball increased by three million, according to the Sports and Industry Association. This travel ball is here to stay and, and people are spending a tremendous amount of money. The travel ball structure is set up when the travel ball tournament comes in, they're going to play a play-in game Saturday. They mean absolutely nothing other than where you're seated for Sunday, unless it's a three-day tournament. It could be a Friday and Saturday play-in. And then you're seated, then you play a single elimination till the rest of the weekend, for that Sunday. Teams can play anywhere from three to eight games during that tournament. Most teams on average will pay, will play about twice a month. That's, you know, it's up to some teams to play more. I know we were involved with the program. I do have a baseball academy. We call it a baseball academy. I have, I've had up to four teams play travel ball and we put them in these tournaments and, and, you know, it's, it's kind of crazy because people, people pay a tremendous amount of money to get on a travel team, some of them. They pay anywhere from five hundred to three thousand dollars just to be on the team. And that depends, you know, that, that fee kind of depends on whether you, they buy their own equipment, whether they have to rent a facility to practice in. Which quite frankly, most, most sports complexes will run for the travel ball circuit. The leagues play somewhere else. They really don't play on, on, on the complex. I understand here we're definitely doing that and I, I agree with that a hundred percent, or from what I hear. But whether they have to rent a facility, whether their coaches pay, this is crazy. We have people paying coaches to coach these kids, but that's just the way it is. It's gone, they do that. They pay coaches to come out and teach their kids. Travel ball, league ball definitely has its place and the competition steps up a little bit. The time and commitment from parents steps up tremendously. You can, you can go on and Google and see the economic impact that travel ball is having on, I looked at some in Mississippi, Vicksburg, for instance. I, I think it was two hundred and something million dollar economic impact. It's just unbelievable. I read that fifty-eight percent of the people that play travel ball, the family will spend twenty-four thousand dollars a year, eight percent. This comes from Ameritrade, this survey they did. Twenty-four thousand dollars.
Thanks for reminding us of that. I appreciate that.
If you get into it now, we, I don't agree with a lot of the things travel ball does, in fact, we never charge our kids any play on our programs. We try to teach them, you know, to play together. We want to teach the game. And there's many, many people out there that do that, but the parents make these commitments to, I think it's in the vision of, my kid's going to get a scholarship one day, you know, I'm going to, well, if they'd save some of this, this twenty-four thousand dollars a year, they can pay for college anywhere they want to go. But they're, they're, just that's their illusion that they want to do it. So, I'm just telling you this because travel ball is, is big money. It's big money and big time commitment to these parents and the families. And there's some benefits to that. The family spends a lot of time together. I mean, when you go, you're going to go and you're going to travel on Friday night, you're going to go in where you're playing. You play, most teams will play before noon, so if they're traveling in, they're going to find a place to stay. They're going to eat, you know, supper there. But the, the families spend a lot of time together. That's one of the pros. You can look up pros and cons of travel ball. And one of them is it does build, you know, a strong family bond and the time you spend together. So, that's a little bit about travel ball and how it works. It's big money there. And I guess now the, the question for, for us here is how we're going to handle our facility. I, I want to tell you this, I, I want to congratulate you because I've been involved with building, with building fields, involved with some sports plaques in a number of ways, maintenance and so forth. That is one of the finest complexes as far as the playing surface, that there's none in time. When they started this, I looked at the specs and I remember asking the engineering company, I said, are we going to hold a contract to this spec? Because it was very, the soil that went in there is blended so that you get an equal percolation rate of your irrigation, your root system will be consistent. You won't have hot spots. I mean, it's first class. I, I want to commend you on that because it, it doesn't get much better than what you've got there. As well as the rest of the set of facility and the amenities, but the, the playing surface from a maintenance standpoint, it couldn't be better. So, if you, if you're looking at travel ball, there's several ways you could go. There's probably four to five different organizations out there put on tournaments. U triple S A, G double S A, softball, there's a, um, overtime sports, I believe it's called, but there's a number of them out there that can turn this on. What really happens in there is they go out and decide where they want to have these tournaments in a region. And what will happen on occasions, one of them individuals will go and book up a field, because most of them charge a, a booking fee, in other words, if you're going to schedule a tournament, you've got to put a deposit down. So, you go in and put your deposit down, well, if I'm putting on a tournament in Ocean Springs, I don't really want a tournament to pop up in Biloxi or here, so I'm going to go and book those fields so that nobody else can come in and get the tournament. And so what that does for the city, it just, you miss out on all the economic benefit. You get their five hundred dollars because they don't get it back, but that's okay. They, they've been doing this for a while. And that's how they, that's what will happen and does happen on occasion. It doesn't happen every weekend, but it will happen. So, you can just leave it out there and say, hey, we're going to, we're going to go talk to these guys, get them to try to come in, try to use our facility. A lot of competition around. The other alternative is to hook up with, I played in a tournament over in, our teams did, over in Hammond. And started reading about a gentleman, Overtime Sports, and I believe that's the name of this company. I've never met him, but I've had some conversations with him over the last two, three months. He had exclusive rights to the facilities in Hammond. And he puts tournaments on there and he, he's really a, he's a veteran. We've played in a lot of tournaments and this guy hears more about the kids, I believe, than any tournament director that I've played with. When I say that, he's, he has extra people, yes, they make a ton of money to put on these tournaments. You, you can do the math with the, the admissions they charge, with what they charge each team to play. Because they'll charge these teams, you know, anywhere from two to three hundred and fifty, paid up to three hundred and eighty, seventy-five dollars for teams to play. Then you have the admission. I've played over in, in Orange Beach. I paid twenty-one dollars to go watch my grandson play baseball one day. Twenty-one dollars a head.
What would you go on that for? Would you leave, what would be a good, an interest fee amount, would be acceptable?
Three hundred dollars. But they range all over. As you get closer, now they'll go up. As you get closer, if you get to July and August, they're going to call it the World Series. There's no such thing as a, there is a cow ripping World Series where you really have to play to get there, but these guys are marketing people. So, they go and say, we're going to host World Series, and they'll do the same thing here. We're going to host our, our World Series badge and pass to Google. And so more people then, they'll come pay seven hundred and fifty dollars for it to be some play. These games are good. They're going to play in a World Series.
What they do in soccer is they call it a showcase. We've got college coaches coming to look at your old boy. Pay, pay seven hundred and fifty dollars for your team to come.
I had a call, I had a call just probably about three weeks ago from a gentleman that was looking for fields. And they called me, he said, I want to know where can I, who can I call? I said, well, let me find out for you. He said, I want June twenty, twenty-first, I've got twenty-five teams and I got thirty to forty coaches, college coaches coming in. I'd like to rent your facility. I said, well, it's my facility, first of all, I'll find out who can put, you know, who, who you can contact. He said, June twenty, twenty-first. So, there's an interest there and there's an opportunity to, to, you know, have a substantial economic impact through travel ball. I would suggest that if you hook up with this, this, this gentleman, like they had the arrangement in, in Hammond, that he had exclusives to that, to that field. Now, the exclusives in our case, I would suggest and recommend that the league had the first rights. Say, what, what are your tournaments, first of all? And you hosting the state, you hosting the regional, you hosting whatever you're hosting. Let the league set those dates. And then work with somebody like this. And, and I asked him, I said, what, how many tournaments are you talking about if you, if you had something, arrangement like that? He said, probably two a month. It's twenty-four tournaments. I saw a lot of folks coming in there. I'll get you his name, I think it's Overtime Sports Product. Google him on the internet. He's, it's, he's really, I said, I've never met the guy. I just like the way he runs his tournaments. He has people out raking field between games. I don't know if that's something that Hammond required him to do, but they were in a college town, of course. They had a lot of, you know, college athletes and they're out there preparing fields. Because we go to some fields and we had no, it, it, you can go from, from morning to night and never have the field ready to drag. So, if you're playing late in the day, you could go to pound check. Because these guys, some of the guys that put on these tournaments, it's all about money. They're not going to spend the extra money to, to pay somebody to come out and drag the fields. This particular gentleman, he, he does that, he takes care of his fields. What else? Rainouts, rainouts is a big deal. I want to have rainouts. Need to think about that if you go into the travel ball circle. How can we prevent rainouts? One worst experience we had, I believe it was in Lafayette, travel day, we played one day, so the next day, rain comes down overnight, rain something fierce.
And then it almost rain out, and we have to pay for them.
Is it, is it a loss? They don't give you your money back.
You're talking about the admitting, emissions, or the, the team thing? They don't give it back?
No.
That was, that's been my experience.
No, they don't. And what was so bad is they had nobody come out. The fields were not that bad that particular day. So, had nobody coming out to try to get the fields ready, fields could have been played on, so they just canceled the tournament. The only thing the tournament director misses is the gate for that next day, which was a Sunday. So, we go and play Saturday, it rained really bad Saturday night. We swore our teams, we never go back a lot yet. Because you could have been playing on with a little bit of effort, a little bit of planning to, let's get the fields ready so we can play. It's a benefit to the, to the host or the director that's putting on the tournament, but from the standpoint of the travel teams, you know, do we want to come back to Lafayette? In our case, no, we don't want to go back to Lafayette. We're not going to go to the hotel rooms and, and play for just one game and, or two games that Saturday, but you don't have a winner. You know, everybody wants to win or place in the tournament, so you don't get that opportunity. And it could have happened. So, you need to think about that as well, how you're going to handle. Your fields are so good with drainage, it's going to be hard to rain out except for the, the dirt portions. But the, the turf portions, the drainage is superb. It's superb. You won't have rain outs, it's just too wet in the outfield to play.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, it's, you know, you just need to have a way to cover, maybe cover, especially in the dirt infield on the softball field. Your turf field, you won't have a problem. Maybe cover the plate and won't have pitching ground a problem, because you're using portable mounds, I understand. So, you won't have the mound being slippery and all, so. But that's just kind of my thoughts on some of the discussions that we've had and, and I'll be glad to answer any questions and, you know, I don't have a dog on the hunt. I, I've played both of, support the league and I, I'm heavily involved in the travel ball.
Steve, let me ask you something. I know there's been a lot of professional baseball players come out recently against travel ball. And you see maybe one day down the road, and I've seen a big explosion over the last ten, fifteen years, but it kind of going back more towards city leagues and record leagues. Because it seems like to me there are a lot of kids who maybe don't have that athletic ability to play travel ball, are just totally missing out now, are just not playing or not. Back when we used to play, I mean, you had kids that weren't that great of athletes, but they still came out and played all the way from time to time. They're t-ballers all the way up, you know, seventeen, eighteen years old. But, I mean, um, you know, there's different classifications. You start at an A, double A, triple A, and majors.
So, you, you don't have to be a great athlete to play travel ball. You can play at the A level. And one thing I like about Dustin and his tournaments, he doesn't just bring in teams, because if you're an A or double A team, you want to play A or double A talent. So, he will take teams in and then have them play in the double A level and you'll go, well, that's a major team. And that, he doesn't do that, but some of these directors will, so.
It is, I, I hear a lot about travel ball, just because my son is friends with Jeff's son and others, is travel softball as big as travel baseball?
It's not as big. It's still, it's still there and yes, there's still, you know, they have their tournaments as well, but I don't think there's as many. I haven't looked at statistics. I had somebody tell me, I asked this gentleman, I said, do you do softball? He said, no, I don't get into it. There's not as much participation as it's come from him, so I, I don't really know.
Steve, kind of most of the, all these tournaments we go to, the concessions, I know people that put it on typically get the table concessions, but who stocks it? I mean, because they don't bring all that with them, do they, or did they?
No, they, most of it was contracted out. They contracted out.
By the facility or the, the guy running the tournament?
No, no, the facility. Yeah. I want to say Gulfport, I heard the number of twenty percent of the gross is what they get. That's big money, because you figure a twenty-team tournament, a twenty-team tournament is going to bring almost two thousand people in here. I know, and none of this stuff is cheap concessions, Dan. It's kind of like the movie theater. You're going to pay a premium for your drinks and everything. You're going to spend, it's going to be twenty-five thousand dollars a, a weekend, I mean, a day, in gross revenue. I remember Gulfport hitting twenty percent. I tried to verify that today. I'm going to call Gus over there.
Just so you know, Steve, I have a very good friend that's, should concession here, support a sports club tournament. Your percentage is correct.
And Steve, you know about what an average field rental is, or what our complex could possibly get worth a run?
They're all over the place, but probably three hundred dollars a field per day with no lights. I mean, there, there's, there's numbers probably you can look at, but when you look at your surrounding areas, oh, brother, I didn't. Surrounding areas, you can, around, you know, they're all over the place. But two to three hundred dollars per field per day, that will include, one, some of the fields will include one, one custodian, so to speak, to handle the trash. They provide a cart for the tournament's directors to line the fields between games, which they hardly ever do, but that's, they do provide it. They provide a chalk. At a couple of the complexes. I kind of went around trying to see what everybody did and, but that's, that's probably about a number. You're working two fifty, three hundred dollars a field per day.
And in terms of the, whether it's Orange Beach, Destin, Pascagoula, or Gulfport, the, the money that the city receives, I, I, would it be fair to say that your experience, the mindset is, look, we're going to make money from the fields and should. There's a cost to that, but the, the city or wherever the locality is, is banking on people eating, dining, sleeping in that particular location. And that generates sales tax or whatever additional taxes exist. Is that, is that fair to say?
It is. I think one of the studies I saw said on average is four point up to four point six per player and coach. That's the number they use as, as the number of people that travel with these kids. And not, not all of them would be from out of town. Some of them are local, but they're here. When you go and play in a tournament, you're just about, sure you're going to be there all day. So, if your games are spread out, you go look for somewhere to eat. If your games are put together, you're going to get something at the, the concession area. Somebody asked me one, what would make our, our place special? And I said, good food and shade. That's the two things that I can think of right now that would make your facility special, because Gulfport has a beautiful facility. Their new turf fields are phenomenal, but my goodness, you're at one hundred and thirty-three when I was there and it was just miserable. Yeah, I'm sure the kids were miserable as well. Didn't hear any complaints, but the new turf fields were really, really hot. And at that time, there was not much shade there. And I don't know if they can prove that, but there was not much shade on their, their new turf field.
Obviously, the talk has been about professional management and that's sort of what you mentioned about your guy in Hammond. Are you aware of any cities or other localities around the coast where those cities handle it themselves through a rec department or perhaps a dedicated agency of that city that just handles the sports plaques?
Well, I think all of the cities handle it themselves. All he does is he has rights to the fields to schedule, because as I mentioned, he can't hardly find fields over here. And when I contacted him, I didn't know if he was interested. He can't find them because there's one organization that will go out and book up all of these dates so that he can't get fields. So, he's saying, hey, I can bring you twenty-four tournaments if I know I can get the fields. I believe twenty-four days open, or twenty-four tournaments a year. I think twenty-four weeks for softball and whatever other days. But he would go through the same process as scheduling with the city, his dates that he wanted.
I, I guess the only concern about having some, an out, I call it an outside person, a, a non-employee scheduling, that is the problem of avoiding. Well, maybe, maybe somebody else wants to have the fields for a weekend that he's not, and he doesn't want that guy to have the fields. You understand what I'm saying? I, I, if, if you can have somebody that's not a city employee that effectively is in charge of scheduling, then how do you, how does, how is that individual going to be fair? Or how do we ensure that he's going to be fair to all companies?
Yeah, and I don't think people want that responsibility of actual scheduling. I think people just want the opportunity to, if he sees, it may be two weekends together, but he wants, people have to go through the same process of coming through the city saying, but what I, what he's saying is, he has such trouble, he's from Louisiana. I think that's a benefit myself. He has a huge following. Off the chain sports is the name of it. You can Google it. Off the chain sports, Dustin Albrecht. His tournaments, he, he told me the other day, he's coming tomorrow, by the way. He wanted to come see us. He's coming at three o'clock, so it, you know.
Can we cancel that with me with him?
Absolutely. He just called, he texted me. We, I, I only talked to him a couple of times. We text a lot. He says, Steve, I've got fifty teams already signed up in Gulfport tournament, April the eighteenth and nineteenth. He said, I can split it and bring half of them to pass to Google. So, I got fifty as a map and this is paperwork.
Okay, so if I'm understanding you right, so Steve is that, so if we basically have an agreement with this guy, then we're not looking for any, anybody else to rent any fields to. That's why I'm. We're still scheduling our league play, but if we make an agreement with this guy, he has exclusive use and we don't, and we don't rent it to anybody else?
For travel.
Travel.
Travel baseball.
So, lead or do you go to him?
Lead is first choice.
That's right. Those dates, that's open again, does that hurt? After those, took the date, the date, you said it was April, what you said the date?
Well, his, he was saying April eighteenth and nineteenth. He says, Steve, I got fifty teams.
Oh, after the eighteen and nineteen, then is that, is that open?
Not, not.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, he's got twenty-four bits.
Yeah, that would just be one of those.
Oh, yeah, I've just one that he, he's scheduling, I've never seen tournaments booked up this early. I mean, when we send our teams, we're going to decide a couple of weeks ahead of time before we play. This guy's got people signing up for all his tournaments already. It's crazy.
And then I think your open dates in the fall, like the softball is what you're saying, right? Softball to come in and book, but.
Yeah.
Just not another travel baseball.
He just don't want to have to compete to find a field. He can move his dates either way. His dates are not set. He don't care what your dates. He's having a problem finding a field, because as I mentioned, what's happening, it going around booking up all, paying, you know, three, five hundred dollars probably to somebody to say, I want to book this field.
They don't want the target on you.
That's right. That's right.
He's out of George Camp.
Well, he is.
That kinda went back to my question. I thought I misunderstood what you said, and apparently I didn't, that, I mean, we would basically anoint to this individual as he would have first dibs on scheduling for non-league time to, and if he wanted to come in and schedule a dozen tournaments in a year, I'm sure we would all be ecstatic if, if that were to be the case. It just, I, I, is that something we gotta think through about, well, why this person, and how's it gonna work? And how do we get softball in here if that's someone else? I mean, is that?
I've made some calls to softball people already, there's not a whole lot of them out there that I'm aware of, but I, I may call one of my friend of mine over in, uh, Saraland. And, uh, he's a director for U triple S A. And, uh, I mean, we're just, if you decide the travel ball the way you wanna go, I'm just trying to, I don't have any ties either way. I don't care, I'm just trying to help get the ball rolling, because the tremendous opportunity to, to generate an economic impact is, I think, for me. I don't think for ten million dollars, because we've got a, you know, I think we can, uh, I think we need to, uh, to get that economic impact, get these motels filled up, get our restaurants, you know, people eating in our restaurants, people spending money here in the past.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And Steve, one other thing is, you know, as a result of the issue with, uh, the misspent, uh, bond proceeds and the fallout from that, what we had to do to cut back on our recreation department, we literally cut it to the bone. What in your mind is it going to take for this city to sort of get ramped back up when it comes to this particular sports place? I mean, I can see, and I, I might be speaking out of turn, I can see one or two people whose full-time job is this sports place that are employees of the city for, whether it's maintenance, whether it's, you know, making sure that you're doing your job, it's, it's whatever. And maybe, uh, a recreation director that falls within his or her purview, but what do you see from a, a, a labor standpoint, that the city's going to have to do once this sports complex is opened and it's fully going?
You probably would want somebody that's over, um, the maintenance portion of it. You know, Gulfport has a lot of fields, and they have a, they paid to have a, uh, turf grass manager that, that actually takes care of all that. Some of it's subbed out. I do a lot of work for them. I do air, I'm doing irrigation work. I do, um, aerating, they don't have aerators, so I do aerating, some of the same stuff you do here for the city. And I'll put together a program based on exactly what they do, because if you look at their field and you look at Ocean Springs field, Ocean Springs does not do a great job, uh, of maintaining their fields. With some of the, some of the stuff that, that we do on a regular basis, that the city does, aerating, top dressing, the dragging of the field, the keeping everything defined, keeping the, the lips off of the infield. And we're looking at about eighty thousand dollars a year for that complex, for the field, to do something similar to Gulfport, everything that they did.
For our complex.
For our complex.
And that, and certainly that's an option to outsource this to.
And that's the field for you. But, but again, I think you still need somebody watching it and, and, and whether it's the director that is scheduling it or, but it's a, it's a big facility to be sure everything's taken care of. You know, the turf and, and management of the fields can be done, but you still got everything else you got to keep up. If you outsource the, the concessions, you know, Coca-Cola, whoever your deal is with now, they're gonna bring you coolers and stuff in here. Unless they've changed for years, they go, they're, they're gonna supply your coolers, you haven't got to buy coolers. And if you're gonna outsource, if you, I, I don't know, I probably wouldn't even have to, you know, you won't have tables and stuff in there, but let the, the company that, that did it on that supply some of the stuff.
And you would think that would be for league and travel, or?
I think you should make it where it's where every time that facility's open, they have to do that. And, and, cause you're getting revenue out of it. You get part of it, you know, it's, that's pretty common, I've said it in kind of confirmed, twenty percent of gross is, you know, you bring in a hundred thousand dollars a month in concessions.
So the league's been, made it known that a good bit of their revenue comes from concessions.
Well, but if we take the twenty percent, we, that goes to them, they're gonna get a raise in, in their income if we do that.
Now, I saw a financial statement that said they lost fifteen thousand dollars in concessions last year.
I'll ask for it, no, I've got.
Why would you want concessions, Dan, you losing fifteen thousand dollars?
I saw it, it was, I, it was a counter question, I just.
And.
Well, but they, they were losing money.
It's just volun, it, it's, it's a cycle. I, the, the fourteen years I was there, there was two times where we thought that something was wrong, because we were losing money in concessions. How do you lose money when you're doubling your markup and you're still losing money, something's wrong. I, and I think this comes to volunteers, it's just, you're asking volunteers to come out and, and, and that's just what's gonna happen. Now, you know, some, you got some great ones, and then others just, for whatever reason, you're just not profitable, it's not run like a business. And I think with the amount of revenue that concessions will bring in, I just think, I think it'd be a logistic nightmare for the league to have their stuff in there, and then they finish up on Friday night, and then the tournament's coming in on Saturday, then how? Well, we gotta lock our stuff up, or we gotta, how do we make that transition?
I equate this to, uh, the booster clubs at the high school, band, quarterback club, dugout club, and everybody's gotta lock up their stuff and move it to twenty Friday, Saturday, and, you know, a game during the week.
I can't imagine a league if there's, if it's outsourced and there's a revenue stream coming from it, that the city in some capacity is willing to funnel it back at you. I can't imagine anybody having a problem with that. Does that say, but I mean, if anybody's been involved with baseball, none of the concessions are like that. I mean, you're in trouble, you give it less space than they want in the league, and it, and it's subject to not, and it's just, it's an easily pilfered pot of money. Even they don't need to do it, you know, just tracking it is a nightmare, so.
But you get to watch your child play, and you don't have concessions standing any. You don't have to walk the floor, you don't have to take the trash out.
And like, there's some concessions I've had about all, with all the equipment needed to be furnished in it, when it opened. I'd be right, I imagine a lot of that, like rats and stuff with their product, and they have their, quite different equipment.
I know the new sports place, it just got built, the city did, it was all into the budget. Their budget's a lot different than ours, of course, but the fryers, the stove, the big walk-in fridge, all that was funded by the city. They're not gonna commit that one, the new sports place, the brand in baseball, yes. Because they, they provided all the equip, basically, that was their, their investment, you know, was to go into equipment, and of course, they, they're planning on getting their twenty percent back to cover that, which they've done, as we all know, very well over the last year. So, I mean, it was a, it was an initial investment, but they did pay for that, they, because, uh, they have the fire suppression system in there for the fryers and so forth. They deal with bigger volume than probably what we are talking about doing, so that has to be maintained, so it's, that's what I. It's a commercial kitchen in there, so that was why the city did, uh, cover that cost for that equipment. Of course, we don't have to have anything of that nature, but that's who did pay for that, was the city.
Well, and the gentleman that was here last week mentioned that they purposely built an outside area to be able to cook outside, so that you don't fall under that, and you don't have to have the fire suppression anything inside. I tell you, who just did one out was, uh, I think I counted, they were only four of you or something, but they did out their concessions like in the last month or two. I'll see if I can put this.
If we're gonna be, we're gonna get on, because baseball seems to have started.
The gentleman that I know from the sports place is interesting. I spoke with him last week after our conversation. He said, you know, I told him I wasn't sure which way we were gonna go at this point in time, but he is interested in, uh, looking into it, because he knows he has the experience, uh, from doing it there, because he does all the fields, things up for it, baseball and softball.
I would suggest you leave it open to where food trailers and food trucks can come in there as well.
Well, I was, that was one of the.
That kind of stuff that sells out.
We've, uh, just so you, the council knows, of course, when this process started all the way back from Sore in the very beginning, that was one of the things that we, we all envisioned was the food trailers. I know I've spoken with, uh, Harper Pew, he's very interested in when we have tournaments, league play, whichever, to bring out a trailer with ice cream cones and so forth else, do that. I know I spoke with, uh, people, the, the previous owners of New York Pizza, they were very interested in coming down and selling pizza. We've talked to Brady's about bringing Lenny's out, uh, to be able to sell boxes. I spoke with, uh, Keith at Bozo's, he was definitely interested in bringing down Polvoys, uh, and all the way to, uh, boil crawfish and so forth, their crawfish, and that, something going on at that point in time, and set house, you know, so, and then all those would be able to be generated off two percent food tax for all that vendors as well, so it would be registered with the city, so the city would reap that money back as well, so.
But if you have a contract with somebody.
Well, the contract normally, to your point, when I spoke to my friend about it, of course, he normally does the hamburgers, the hot dogs, you know, pickles, you know, the, the basic kind of stuff, he's not talking about, he would never be.
A taco truck.
He's not talking about. No, he was fine with it. Well, he would, I told him that that's an interest that, you know, we've had several local vendors from the city that are interested, and he was, you know, he was fine with it. I mean, like, you know, there was, he feels like, you know, it's, it's maybe not, it's gonna cut into the twenty percent out of the concession stand that the city gets, because of course, unless we, you know, but I'm not sure if we can charge the vendor, you know, but we might be able to charge the vendors a fee to set up. So it goes back to the thing that we've noticed that, and Stephen can speak to this, Jennifer can as well, I can, from soccer and travel, the things that keep, if you can keep the people at the field, the more, you'll be able to hold that money. There at the field, the longer you can keep them there, the better off you are, and the things that keep them there are the different food varieties from around the place, the place, just like the new Oxford Soccer Complex in Oxford, they bring out all the different local pizza places, sandwich shops, different things like that. Chick-fil-A, the whole nine yards, to turn around and keep people at the field so they don't leave, so they can try to keep as much money inside the park as you possibly can. And I feel like the area that we have, it'll be where the old T-ball fields were, there's a lot of shade in that area and so forth, and I, you know, I'm assuming it's gonna be grass at some point, it'll be a great venue that we'll have, to be able to set these places up at, um, to keep some of these families, you know, that travel so much, because I know that was our biggest concern when we did travel with the kids, was loading everybody up, getting them out somewhere, waiting in line, and making it back to the field. If we could set up our own little tent or area, in an area to kind of kick back and relax, I mean, I think we can, we can do a lot of things with the, with the facility we're gonna have. And the things that we promised all the local vendors that supported the two percent tax is that we would get them involved once we got the facility ready, so I do feel we owe it to them to try at some point to get this going, because they're all interested in it. And I think it'll just be more to Steve's point, that'll keep people coming back for more, when they turn around and know, oh, we gotta go back to Pascagoula, they have crawfish. I mean, you are.
Or you just gotta get beer.
I'm not going, I, I won't go down that path, but, you know, that's, that's, that's all this is story, but.
Show them how to know.
I can't go down that path, but I, I just like, I just see, like, even from Ed's doing, to a cheeseburgers and things like this, you get some things, some of the different vendors that, and especially people that we have here in this town, you'll get the people coming back, because to Steve's point, we've traveled to different areas, got rained out, so forth, we didn't go back. But the ones that did different things special, we always went back.
Can I make a suggestion to the two of you, and I did anybody else who wants to chime in? You know, Jay, Steve, you guys have the contacts, and, and y'all have done yeoman's work. I'd love for y'all to either get them in touch with Michael, or, you know, so that, you know, at some point, and we may need to have additional special meetings heading up to the, to the, uh, uh, the March fourteen deadline, because we may end up having a, a contract that we approved with somebody, I don't know. But I'm just saying, you know, I, I, I want y'all to be involved, uh, but it's good to get somebody sort of with the city hat on to say, you know, get the information, maybe get it to either us or to the right person or something. I just, I, I think Jennifer's right, we're gonna have to get moving on this pretty quick, because we've got a, we're about now less than two months, coming up on forty-five days before league starts, and I think we've got to have something in, if not in place, and some definite plans on how we're gonna get there.
So if we're going to go with concessions, is that a decision we need to make? And do we need to just throw it to Michael and say, now it's, now it's, you're ready, and you made the decision? And if it's an R and Q or whatever, and let him go with it, because then we need to touch base with those parents and say, okay, if we're fourteen days back from starting out there at this last time we met, that, that's a limit.
I don't have a problem with him making a decision, I think ultimately it has to come back to us to sort of really share a contract and say this is approved, but as far as vetting, do what the options are, sure.
I mean, because Michael's gonna have to come up with a contract and that kind of thing.
And, and Steve has provided me the list, and I think I do have Mr. Albrechts' phone number, and I can, you know, reach out to him as well to start to feel that out. And I know I have a meeting with you on Friday, so.
I know, I'm right there in the face of you.
Were you available tomorrow at the tree?
I think we have an agenda meeting, but I can certainly make myself available to.
I don't know if he's spending the night or not. But he, he wanted to come look at the facilities, he's excited about it, and if y'all decide to do anything well, I mean, yes. I put him in touch with y'all, and y'all can work the details out, I'll just, I know there's several things that need to be done, because the two calls I've got, and one from Dustin, and one from this, this, uh, I guess the shoppers that want to put on the showcase.
They probably put it on Facebook.
How much, and.
Really?
Yeah, we got a question, I know, uh, Alms not here tonight, but I know he got a question from the softball people that it's out there on Facebook, that he's preserved Pascagoula, the new Pascagoula sports flags, but it's on Facebook, and now they, they're, they're coming to town. Cause Alms called me, and he said, who's scheduling the fields? And I said, I have no idea.
Hey, I told him.
I told him, I said, I have no idea, I said, call Anthony, because I said, I'm assuming somebody with a directive now to the recreation department at this point, but it's already on, supposedly it's on Facebook.
He's just, that's real business, he's already there.
He is virtually in his mind reserve his field, so nobody else can get in.
I was like, wow, so we don't even have a lot of the ground, we don't even have moping yet, and he's already perched.
Yeah, I'll give you five hundred.
I know my ground, and I'm not gonna overstep that, and I don't know if it's committed to. Uh, you know, that's one of the things I was fixing to say, we need to set up, you know, we need to determine how much you're gonna charge, and you determine entry fees, because it is time to start scheduling some of these things that really need to, to expedite that process as best I can.
There's something on the books currently, because I remember I talked to Barcy, and she was here, about somebody that's interested in doing more small showcase out at the, at the C C fields, and.
Yeah, there is, there is.
It was really expensive, that, this was somebody who I viewed, that, that the field prices were very expensive, um, compared to places around here, so I did find you some of that, and make sure.
I don't remember really expensive, I, I wanna say it was hundred, one, five bucks or something like that.
I see the number that I had, because the guy who I viewed wanted to do that, it was gonna be like a eighteen, sixteen high school, and, uh, age, but it was like a thousand bucks.
Well, it may be that, that we have per game doing, not per day, or something, I'm not sure, we, we, I might need to look at that.
So real quick on the food issue before we get all over, we, we've talked about it direct commission every meeting, and this is driving me nuts. I don't know how y'all can handle it, or if you can handle it, but that McDonald's, it's gonna see a whole lot more foot traffic, and a whole lot more drive-through traffic, and a whole lot more traffic, period, you know, market street. Somebody needs to talk to, that's your family, and explain to them the importance of bringing that thing up to quality standards. I don't know if y'all ever walked in there, but it's the.
Worse for what McDonald's and.
It absolutely, and they're fixing to be at the center of all this. And I mean, if, somebody needs to address that, talk to them in some way, shape, or form, because that is horrible.
Cause that, I know that was a conversation I had with, uh, who's our new chamber of commerce director?
Dave.
They, when we did the, uh, the. the kicking of the dirt, whatever you wanna call it, at the fields, when we did the shovels, heard I had a long conversation about that, that, you know, from a chamber commerce standpoint, I told her the same Jason said about the testers, but I said it about all the businesses along there. You know, from, you know, not necessarily cleanliness, but I mean, I talked about the barbecue places right there, I mean, I just talked about that, you know, I would love to see everybody's first, you know, they're gonna have to pick their business up, and the one thing that we did communicate back to them, of course, is that we would hopefully be able to give them a schedule when tournaments will come into town and so forth, so they can hopefully prepare for that, but I mean, I feel like, you know, the Market Street corridor, if you got a business on there, from Lenny's starting at the highway, you know, all the way down past the Sonic, New York Pizza and so forth, you don't see any flux of business when we start bringing in two tournaments a month, and we got the league play, and we got everything else going on with this. Something's wrong. I mean, you know, since I mean, that McDonald's is, to Jason's point, it's not good, and, uh, I'm gonna, I don't wanna offend them in any way, way, shape, or form, but cause they do provide a lot of tax dollars and jobs to the city, but, you know, it definitely has to be.
But this, this is what that one's forgotten about, I mean, you know.
I don't know, it's, but I mean, it's a, it's.
It's service, it's cleanliness, it's the whole game, but they're just.
Um, I've had a request, can we, let's go ahead and have a recess for until about seven o'clock, and we'll resume the meeting at that time.